I will call to order the Tuesday, March 7, 2023, Urban Dale City Council meeting and ask the clerk to take roll call, please.
Blake.
Here.
Carberry Montgomery.
Here.
Kroll.
Here.
McBurney.
Here.
Obrich.
Thank you.
Please stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Urban Dale is a national leader in character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In connection to tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Item two is to approve the agenda. Ask for a motion in a second.
Motion by Blake.
Second.
Second by Kroll. Discussion, please vote. Item three, presentations. We have three very special presentations tonight. First is a grant presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Jan Herking, Jan, to kick us off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Excited to be able to present tonight. We submitted and received a grant from Mid-American Great Outdoors, $125,000 to our water trails project at Walker Johnson Park. So Cole Miller is here with Icon. Cole, I don't know if you want to say a few words?
Just thank you very much for applying for the grant and working with us. Congratulations, and we're excited to see how it progresses.
Great, and we appreciate the partnerships and obviously the funding opportunities. And the project is, the construction drawings are done. We're waiting on some final permitting processes, and we'll be bidding that out pretty soon. So we're excited to have that as a 2023 project.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Cole. Appreciate it. Item 3.2 is to read the proclamation for Women's History Month of 2023. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless ways, and whereas women have contributed locally to the growth and success of the city of Urban Dale is elected officials, city staff, community organization leaders, volunteers, and engaged residents. And whereas since at least 1981, the United States Congress and the president have designated a time in March for the celebration of Women's History. So now therefore, I, Robert Andewig, Mayor of the city of Urban Dale, do proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month and urge all residents of Urban Dale to learn about and to celebrate the contributions of women past and present in shaping our community. Proud to sign this tonight. And I just wanted to note, we do have a list of city council persons that have served. Women city council persons, Veda Wilson, first from April 1928 to January 1929. Mrs. Williamson, serving from February 1929 to April of 1930. Eileen Lemon, who just passed away in the past year, serving from 1958 to 1960. Marilyn Cole Morgan, serving from 1991 to December of 1999. Susan Seepke, serving from January 2000 to December 2003. Mary Paulson, serving from January 2004 to December 2011. Of course, our current council members, Bridget Carby Montgomery, serving since 2020, and Amy Kroll, serving since 2022. So thank you each and every one of them for serving our community. All right, and then item 3.3, we do have a special presentation from our Polk County Supervisor and now Urban Dale resident, Robert Brownell. So Bob, the floor is yours.
Mayor, members of the council, Robert Brownell, Polk County Supervisor, 10525 Hickory, here in beautiful downtown Urban Dale. Had a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about tonight, basically some ARPA funds that we spent on affordable housing, and also the Resource Center that will be opening this, hopefully this year, and some workforce initiatives that we're working on. Under affordable housing, we allocated $12 million to Polk County Housing Trust Fund for assistance to developers on building affordable housing, kind of targeting the 30% to 60% of average median income. And that's basically going to be leverage money. $12 million sounds like a lot of money, but it isn't really when you're developing apartments and duplexes and aplexes and so forth. So it'll be leverage money to help possibly close the gap and help people lift them up to a point where they can pay less than 30% of their income on affordable housing. So that's underway. The Polk County Housing Trust Fund will have a grant committee that'll take a look at those applications when developers make a decision. They haven't done it yet, they're just getting set up, but that money's there for that. It'll be a committee decision by them. We also allocated $100,000 for an outreach person to work with developers and find developers that are interested in doing this and how to work their way through the process. Excuse me. We added $3 million for a revolving loan fund to help construct affordable housing units. That would go towards that $12 million, but this would be revolving fund, so money would come back to us, continue to use that. And then $5 million we allocated to NFC, an ever-financed corporation today, to assist with down payments, also a revolving fund. NFC's been working on things like that for some time. They have some great bank partners, private sector bank partners, and we think this will work very well within that space. And then we have a $6 million loan fund that we set up for to fund major repairs on existing homes anywhere in Polk County, including Urban Dale. So people can apply for that, and if you're in your home for a certain amount of time, I think it's five years, and the loan's forgiven. But these would be more major repairs than just a water heater, like roofs and things like that. So that would be good. We think that'll make a difference for people, staying in their homes and also hopefully make a dent in the affordable housing issue. And by dent, I mean dent. We calculate that based on the 30% to 60% of AMI people and the 30% of their income or less to go towards rent, we're probably still short 11,000 units in Polk County, Metro Des Moines, for affordable housing. So our $12 million, this sounds like a lot of money, and we allocated towards Polk County Housing Trust Fund for this purpose, but it's not going to come anywhere near 11,000 units. So we've got a long ways to go, but it's something, and hopefully it'll make a difference to some folks. On the workforce, we brought several entities together to boost nursing employment in the nursing field. You might have seen this in the paper, we brought together a number, all the hospitals, Broadlawn's, Unity Point, Mercy, and also several colleges, DMU, Grandview, and DMAC, to come together and help us put together a program that would help people stay in nursing school and get into nursing school from K through 12, recruitment to people that are in nursing school already. And you might think, well, we're talking about tuition reimbursement, not so much. The hospitals are paying for nursing tuition already, so we didn't really need to do that. But we have found that there's a lot of different entities, including all the hospitals and the different colleges, all reaching out at the same time for different reasons and different people at the same time. So we allocated $1 million to put on two personnel staff to kind of centralize that promotional aspect of a nursing school, so that the colleges and the hospitals could kind of stay away from that, and we could point them in the right direction, and the students themselves can apply for help with one of those, through those schools or through those hospitals. That should help. And the other thing we found is that less than 70% of people that start nursing school actually graduate. And there's a lot of reasons for that. Not healthcare so much, but childcare would be a big reason, and things like that, transportation. So the other person will be working with them as they're in nursing school in order to help them, you know, kind of get past some of those obstacles, and hopefully we can boost that number up past 70%. This made national news, it's very unique, the only entity and only jurisdiction in the country that's doing this, so hopefully it'll catch on and do a good job. Speaking of childcare, Link Associates is a mental health developmental disability provider we work with a lot, and they have found that childcare is a problem for their employees, like a lot of folks have, and so they have volunteered to start up their own childcare center for their own employees. And the 14 providers that we use for mental health and developmental disabilities here in Polk County would also be eligible for that. That'll be at cost and will be a quality childcare experience. It'll be in the Link Associates building itself in West Des Moines, very nice building. They have staff hired already and ready to go, so that should help not only them, but also other providers that need childcare assistance. So we allocated $600,000 towards that, like I said, to help them get off the ground on that aspect. That could be something that could be, you know, a lot of places do that in the private sector. That's not a totally unique idea, kind of unique in nonprofit world, but in the private sector it's done quite a bit. Last thing I want to talk to you about is Resource Center. We used to call that the Welcome Center. Last time I talked to you, I think I called it the Welcome Center. We decided that's kind of too much like the expectation would be, you get a swag bag and a couple of, you know, certificates to get food at Ruby Tuesday or something. But so we're calling it Resource Center, and it'll be on Carpenter Avenue, right across the street from the Health Department. And that'll be hopefully opening this year. We have a director hired, it's not official yet, so I can't give you her name, but she's a, has an ethnic background and has been through the refugee experience, through resettlement camps and so forth, and came to Canada and into the United States. She'll be very good, we're really excited to have her. But we'll open it up. Our idea, our vision is to have a building that encompasses all of our nonprofit partners that we work with in the refugee and immigrant space, where someone can come in from wherever they come from, and find somebody that looks like them, and is from their, her home country, and can find resources to get started here in Des Moines. Des Moines Metro is the second fastest foreign-born growth in the United States right now. We have thousands of secondary immigrants that come here. Our immigration, our primary immigrants aren't that many really, but the secondary immigrants, which means people that have resettled someplace else and moved here on their own, is gigantic. And a lot of those are folks that, in many of you in the nonprofit world, have probably worked with these folks, I can see Amy herself. But what happens is they come here, and towns like Des Moines, Omaha, Columbus, and they can get good jobs, and they save their money and buy their own homes within four or five years. And we see that a lot across western suburbs in particular. If you're settling in Los Angeles, Phoenix, New York, someplace like that, you're probably not going to have your own home in your lifetime, but here you can. And what they do is they take pictures of their nice yard and their nice swing set and stuff in the backyard, and the school their kids go to, and then their friends go, wow, that's for me, and they come here. So we want to keep that up, and we want to make this a welcoming community, because, you know, for workforce issue, from our perspective, this is a workforce issue and a moral issue, because the more immigrants we bring in here, like we did the Southeast Asians back during the 1970s, who are now our doctors and coaches and teachers and lawyers and everything else, and it's been a total success. Well, this will be a total success, too. We've seen it happen before, and I think it'll happen again. But we need to have a good resource center where they can come in and get the resources they need to get started and become part of the community and be successful here. So that's my update for tonight, and I appreciate you listening to me. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Bob, I just want to thank you and the board supervisors for the amount of thought and effort that you're putting into the dispersment of the ARPA funds. It just amazes me every day when I read how you're dispersing it, the creativity that is going into it to really get at the issues facing the metro, and not just kind of throwing it out willy-nilly, but really focusing, you know, these programs you're talking about tonight are just, you know, so specific to meet specific needs, you know, childcare and the, you know, mental health provider arena. That's just so, you know, so specific, and I really appreciate that. The other thing, as you know, for me personally, and I think for, I speak on behalf of most of the board, affordable housing and developing it here in Urban Dale is a priority. And I appreciate that you're putting all your, a lot of money towards the Polk County Housing Trust Fund, but I guess I would like to see if there's a way, I know we had applied for some technical assistance money from the trust fund that we didn't receive, that if there's a way that we can figure out a way to work, to reach our, I mean, we need to be party to putting out affordable housing in the metro, but we don't necessarily have, you know, the resources or the knowledge that, say, the city of Des Moines or even the city of West Des Moines have. So I think there's a way that we, we could work better with the Polk County Housing Trust Fund to figure out how to bring, you know, we don't have the vacant ground that some of our other communities do, but I think there's a way that we can get creative and hopefully with your assistance, get the trust fund to focus a little bit on helping us out.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help you do that. Yeah, with respect to the ARPA piece, there was kind of two choices. One was to put it, make it kind of a glorified grant program, which some counties did, and I don't think this worked as well as this. This really took a lot more work, but I think it's going to work out well. And some of this stuff, I think it's going to really pay dividends. Grant programs are great, but we didn't think that we'd get a bang for the buck out of that, so I appreciate you noticing that. And I'm not ripping the current director of the Polk County Housing Trust Fund, Eric Burmeister, I love the guy, he's great, but he's retiring, as I know. And so there probably will be a new direction down there, and that may be a good opportunity for Urban Dale to weigh in.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to point that out. I mean, it's something that's important to us to seek, to get more in the community to support our workforce, but I think we need, and I know we're working on our comp plan and that's being addressed in there, but I also think we need to have some, have a little bit of help putting it all together. So, thank you.
Bob, before you take off, you mentioned the $6 million repair program. Will there be information coming out about that that we can use?
I'll get that to you. I'll get it to AJ and he can forward it to anybody who wants to, but yeah, that'll be, that's a nice program, I think, that'll be a good one. We've had, we've had programs like that before, and they really work well, and NFC's had one, had them too, and as you know, they really, they get a lot of attention and they really, they do a good job. This will be a little bigger deal, like I said, most of our home repair programs are maybe new windows or new water heater, stuff like that. This could be more major repairs, which people need.
Yeah, sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob, really appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Mayor.
Thank you for your representation of us and keeping us up to date. All right, we will move on then to Citizens Forum. Item four, this is your opportunity to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's agenda. Does anyone like to address the council this time? Okay, moving on then. Item five for the adoption of the minutes, first from the February 21, 2023 meeting.
Motion by Blake. Second by McBurney. Discussion, please vote.
Item six is the consent agenda. We have 15 items on that for approval.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second by Blake. Discussion, please vote. All right, moving on, item seven, public hearings. I will call the public hearing for the maximum property tax dollars for fiscal year 2324. The public notice for this was published in Des Moines Register in February 2023 and asks for objections to that notice as published.
There were none.
Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing? Motion by Blake, second by McBurney. Discussion, please vote. All right, to introduce this is our finance director, Nikki Lamb.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, tonight is the first step of the budget approval process. This is the new legislation that required a public notice and related hearing for a maximum levy rate. This, if you'll recall, only incorporates certain specified levies in the legislation, so it does not include your debt service levy. That one does not have the same requirement. So what you have on your screen, this is the form that's required. We went ahead and published this prior to Senate File 181 passing. Because of the nature of this notice is to say, this is the maximum dollars we could claim in property taxes. So there's no rule that says you can't go lower than that, so based on the Senate file that did pass, the valuation rollback for residential properties did go down. So what that does, based on council's direction, is we are not going to change the levy, we are going to keep it the same. So that just means this is the maximum, we will actually be levying less than that. So the total impact that is different from what is on here, this column that is the budget proposed maximum, the total valuation number did go down based on the new valuation rollback to the tune of about $100 million. So the total impact was $790,000 in lower revenue that we will receive based on the levies provided here. So those are the documents that will come forward. That has all been updated through our budget document, which has been updated on the website, so that does reflect the current. We are still, as I said, staying at the $10.01, so it incorporates the $8.57 shown here, plus the $1.44 debt service levy. Other than that, nothing changed, but that rollback number has been taken into account, and we were, our estimate was 901,000 total dollar impact, because some of that is on the debt service levy, and we ended up at 927. So quite close to what we thought it was going to be, and we're able to absorb that and just keep the levy the same.
What does that change on, the percentage change?
5.67.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, so 5.67%.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any questions from the council for Nikki at this point? All right, thank you, Nikki. All right, this is a public hearing. I think some folks may be here tonight. If you want to speak on this item, this is your opportunity to do so. You have five minutes to, I'll recognize anybody for five minutes, and you can come up here to the podium, please give your name and address. Is there anyone like to address the council on this item at this time? Okay, seeing none, then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Carmen Montgomery. Discussion, please vote.
Second.
Second by McBurney. Further discussion? Please vote. All right, thank you. Item eight, establish public hearings versus item 8.1, to establish a public hearing for the operating budget for fiscal year 2324. This would establish March 21 as that date.
Motion by Obrich.
Second by Blake. Discussion, please vote. Item 8.2 is to establish the public hearing for the Fire Department Trench Rescue Training Facility. This would establish April 4 as that date, and John Larson or Chief Holt, we're both here, want to answer any questions if there are on that.
Motion by Obrich.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote. Item nine, planning and zoning items versus item 9.1, and that is the Prairie Tower Platte 3, final platte on 128th Street on Meredith Drive, and to introduce this as our community developer, Christine Franklin. Steve?
Thank you, good evening. This is a final platte in the Prairie Tower development for R&amp;R, so this is the northwest corner of Meredith and 128th. The existing Fast and Fresh is on the lot that's right there with the frontage on Meredith, and this involves three lots just to the north of that area. And so let me show you what that looks like. Okay, so this is the final platte. It creates a total of three lots. There are two lots that are north of the Fast and Fresh, north of Hickory Drive, that are in the retail portion of the PUD, so these are the two lots that are right there. There is an outlot, which is for detention, and then the largest lot to the north is Lot 3 here. That's 13.39 acres, and that is the lot on which the warehouse, the first warehouse out there will be constructed, which was approved back on January 24 by council. So creates those three lots. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval subject to items noted. Would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any questions from the council for Steve on this?
Can you go back to the other map?
To the aerial photo?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the Fast and Fresh there is right there.
Yep, and this creates two additional retail lots just on the north side of Hickory, so two lots right here, and then the big warehouse lot.
So there's still, there's two existing along Hickory, there's two existing retail lots, and there'll be two more.
Correct.
Okay, because retail.
More lots that can be platted later just to the west here, too.
Adam knows how I feel about that.
And then, as far as what's going on the other side of the road, we approved something, and is that, where's the intersection that that'll kind of connect up with?
Uh, Plum Drive will come through, so there's, there'll be an access point here, and then there'll be another one up to the north as well.
Okay, so I'll reiterate my question about a stoplight.
John, you want, no plans, we don't think for that. I mean, clearly we're going to see what happens with traffic coming in and out. We feel at this point, based on what we've seen for traffic, the combination of traffic coming along Meredith, getting off the interstate and coming up from the south, but then also coming through Grimes, and whoops, and dropping down from the north, that those full movement access locations will be enough to keep everything moving through there.
When it's time for a stoplight, who pays for it? Is it the developers on each side?
The PUDs are written such that it would be split at Plum Drive. If there are any additional ones in the future, that's typically how we do that, although we do not anticipate that that will ever happen.
The traffic on 128th, as you get up north to Grimes, closer to Grimes, is, I mean, it's horrific without the signal, where there's no signals. So I tried to turn south at the intersection that's north of where the stoplight is at Ignite, and it took five, at least five minutes to turn south.
That's right, yeah, there's a lot of people.
I mean, that's in Grimes, so it's not, but I think they're planting a light there from what I can tell, but I guess I'm with Adam on this one to make sure we're keeping an eye on it. But, you know, there's not, you know, I was on a through street coming from Johnston, where my mom's house over in Johnston, cutting through Grimes and down in Urban Dale.
It's more, I mean, with what's being built there, we're expecting a lot of truck traffic, and so it obviously takes longer for that truck traffic to merge in with things, so I'm thinking there'll be a need for more traffic control devices here, not based off a traffic count, but type of traffic.
It's certainly something we're going to monitor, and the fact with both of the warehouses on either side of the road and the size of these warehouses, there could be a substantial amount of truck traffic. So we will continue to watch it, and then if we need to pow out and figure out a solution, we will certainly do that.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Council Letter 7365.
Motion by McBurney. Second by Blake. Discussion, please vote. Item 9.2 is the Magnolia Heights Platte 2 Town Home Site Plan on 153rd Street and Buttercup Way. Steve?
Okay, this is a site plan for a portion of the Magnolia Heights development. So here is the whole thing, just to refresh your memory what it looks like from the preliminary platte. So this is 152nd Street, this is Waterford Road down here, this is where the new school in the Walkee District, the new elementary school is under construction, and so this site plan, we're talking specifically about this area of townhomes immediately north and adjacent to the school. So that is the area that we're talking about, and so this is just a little bit of an enlargement of that area, so the school is immediately south of Buttercup Way here. This is, it involves about eight and a half acres of the total overall 104-acre development, and this is proposing 102 single-family attached residential lots or townhomes in this area. The density is a little bit higher, it's 12 units per acre, obviously around schools is where you are going to find your more dense housing. This overall development has a variety of single-family lots and will have a variety of types of townhomes. This is the first section, and this is what's being proposed in this area, again, 102 units. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval subject to items noted. Be happy to answer questions on this one.
All right, thanks, Steve.
I'm fairly sure I asked these same questions when we had townhouses being developed over by Radiant. They were the first to go in, they were, although they were, they're detached there. But, so they're, so kids that live in this subdivision, townhouse subdivision, are going to have to cross Buttercup Way.
Correct.
That really doesn't sound good, Buttercup Way. How are they going to?
I would agree, we had a list, that's what we came up with.
A princess bride.
So how are they safely crossing and getting? So how are they safely crossing and getting into the school property? Is school traffic coming in on Buttercup Way?
Some is the way that they've developed it. Some is going to come in north on this and some will come in on the south. I assume, John, we will work with the school to come up with crossing routes and that type of thing like we typically do. Yeah, it's too early at this point. We haven't had those conversations.
I mean, I just think if there's school traffic coming in and and I think even though this is a small street and a small subdivision, you got to have a crossing guard there to get those kids across the street.
Those are certainly conversations we will have with them. I know in the overall scheme of things, the district was much happier with school, with people living here and going to this school instead of having to cross Alice's.
Right, right, right.
They like that idea a whole lot better. But your point is valid.
I want I want kids to be able to walk to school. And this is fantastic. But until, you know, we got to make sure they can get safely across Buttercup Way.
Absolutely. That's what they want. And we will have those conversations with them when we get to that point.
Okay.
All right. Any further? Is there a motion?
I will move approval of Councilor 7366.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Croll. Discussion, please vote. All right, that passes. Thank you. Item 10, regular general items versus item 10.1, is to consider the equipment purchase for the investigation division vehicle. Chief?
Mayor members of council, just purchase of a smaller SUV for our investigation division. We're finally getting staffing up to speed where we can add a detective toward our investigation division. And it's been scheduled since 2020. So we need a vehicle for them to drive. And this is what we came up with. Did our darndest to try to find a hybrid. They are just not out there. We still have a hybrid car ordered for our support services division. We have no idea when we're getting that. We just got word last week that all of our hybrid SUVs for patrol may not be coming. Ford just notified all of their four dealerships that that may not happen. They had so many orders that they can't fill them all. And they will let them know who will get them and who will not. So we're doing the dance. And if those fall through, we will have to order gas for those, too, because we just can't keep waiting. We're waiting on the first batch and already have the second batch ordered. And we're just, we're trying to hold on. And we were supposed to get them this spring. And that's not looking really promising right now with that latest word coming out. So we'll see where that goes. But for this particular vehicle, we got three bids and Bob Brown came in the lowest. And then we'd like to purchase that vehicle.
All right. Any questions for Chief? Is there a motion?
Move approval Councilor 7363.
Motion by Croll.
Second.
Second by Obrich. Discussion, please vote. All right, that passes. Thanks, Chief. Item 9.2, excuse me, item 10.2 is to consider the purchase of the joint and crack ceiling. John, answer any questions if there are any?
Motion approved Councilor 7364.
Motion by McBurney.
Second.
Second by Obrich. Discussion, please vote.
Sorry.
All right, that passes. Item 10.3 is considered the purchase of the open air shelter for Sharon Heights Park. Scott, are you going to present this?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Scott Hope with the Parks and Recreation Department. Couple of things today. The first one is for the approval of a shelter, kind of a gazebo, similar to what we just put in last year at South Karen. Open air shelter, actually, this item is actually budgeted in this upcoming fiscal year. However, it takes a long time to get these. So similar to what we just did at Acadia, similar, it's the same company. They would all be for a fall installation. But the budget for the 2324 does include $45,000 for this item. We are recommending the 24 foot octagon wood roofed shelter with metal coated columns. The cost for the shelter is $59,392.65. So staff is recommending using $14,362.65 out of the Parkland Development Funds to help fund the rest of the project. This does include the site preparation, installation, concrete pad, and all the roofing as far as for this project. And again, it's going to look pretty similar to what we have there at South Karen now. Here is the location that it would be in Sharon Heights Park. And again, in order to stay consistent with style and construction equipment, we are requesting the use of the RCP shelter for the shelter at Sharon Heights. As I mentioned, significant lead time to get them here. So we are trying to move this now so it can be a fall installation. And we are recommending the approval of a purchase through Cunningham Recreation in the amount of $59,362.65 for Sharon Heights Park. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Scott, in this picture, you showed just the one.
Yeah, that was just because that was the only one that was there when I took the picture.
So how many can, how many will you put into into the shelter?
Two fits the most comfortably, three can fit.
Okay.
But I wasn't going to drag the table that was clear over here under that one picture. So I just let it.
For my question, so it just looks kind of sad with just one picnic table there.
I just took this the other day and we really haven't rearranged after winter. So and like I said, I was all alone for the picture. They're not allowed, so I'm not moving.
With Sharon Heights, it seems like it's it's a more bikeable park. It's, you know, with where it is and trail system and so forth. And so is there any, I couldn't remember if there's any structure there for bikers to lean up against or anything that way, you know?
There's not, but we could look to include that fairly easily in this location to add one. We've tried a couple of times to get a drinking fountain in there as well, too. And we've had zero people take the bid on that. We bid it three times, I think now, to try and get someone to help us get a drinking fountain in there. And we, it's a small little project and no one was willing to come in and do that. So but yeah, we can sure look at that.
All right.
Move approval Councilor 7361.
Motion by Obrich.
Second.
Second by Croll. Discussion, please vote. All right, that passes. Item 10.4 is consider the purchase for the Rockland Park Playground Equipment. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As as you mentioned, Rockland Park Playground, this is one of the CIP items. We're looking at doing three playgrounds. So this is the second of the of the three. And it's for Rockland Park. Rockland Park was put in in 1996, and it is our last remaining sand surface playground. So for ADA wise, we are happy to have this one out of here because the sand is not ADA accessible. So we would be replacing it with a certified safety fiber. The other thing about Rockland, it is a very unique shape as far as for the border around the playground, making it fairly difficult to find a piece that fits in there nicely. So we did use Sourcewell as the opportunity to work with the vendor to try and maximize the space within Rockland. A new playground would include a climbing rock, would include a slide, and then the cargo nets, the climbing net, which are very popular. And we really don't have one in this kind of area of the community. So that's a nice feature to add in there. We would also be adding two swings, two, four swings altogether, two belts and two tots, and then some freestanding panels along the sidewalk as well, too. So Miracle Recreation Equipment is a part of Sourcewell, which is a nationwide purchasing cooperative. And these are within the ability of the city's purchasing policy to do so. So staff is recommending the approval of the equipment from, for, sorry, for, should say, Rockland Park there, from Boland Recreation in the amount of $64,000. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Scott, I saw that the lead time for this is 10 months.
Yes.
So this is actually probably not going to be installed in.
Probably be in the spring.
Next year.
Yeah.
Is this the park that kind of has a zip line type feature currently or?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is there a zip line type feature in the current playground structure here? I couldn't remember if this was the park that had that or not. Okay.
Oh, yeah, there's a, there's a small track ride. Yeah, it's a small one that goes through the middle.
So that would be taken out, obviously, with this?
Yeah, it's one of these connections here is the track ride. So, yeah, that would be replaced. The one thing about this particular park, too, it only has the two swings, the two belt swings, there's no tot swings in there. So we're adding the tot swings as an option as well, too, which is a nice feature. We still have a track, track glide up at the all inclusive playground, though. In Northview, we added that a couple of years ago.
All right.
I move approval Councilor 7357.
Motion by Croll.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Item 10.5 is consider the purchase for the Northview Estates Park Playground Equipment. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for our third piece of playground out of the CIP. A little bit on where Northview Estates Park is. It is a very small park, pocket park. Here is the interstate. Here is the location of the soon to becoming dog park. And there's a small little pocket park right in here, Northview Estates Park. So I'll show you an aerial here. This playground was installed in 2000. It is the smallest footprint of the three playgrounds that we are installing. So pretty tiny in size, but it does have a half court basketball court up in the park as well, too. The new playground would be some four and six foot decks, two slides, some multiple climbers coming off there. And again, we're back with two swings, two belt and two tot swings. We did solicit bids on this one because this was a pretty standard one. We set a parameter of not to exceed 24,000 or $42,000. And it did need to include the swings. Four vendors submitted a total of six proposals. We received some input from the Northview Estates Park neighborhood through through next door, through the social media platform. And then we did a staff evaluation. And the design from Cunningham Recreation did receive the most support. So and that was the images that you were seeing back there in the amount of $41,998.41. And staff is recommending this piece of playground.
So what was with the one that was only 22,000? That seems like significantly less.
Yes.
So it just wasn't as fun?
It was, it was a net climber.
Oh, okay.
And that was it.
Oh, okay.
So and then the swing. So it was not enough to evaluate, to receive anything. So it did not have the play value that we were really looking for. And this did come up last meeting in regards to the $225,000 that we have allocated for the playgrounds. These are the current dollars amounts pending approval of the, I got Sharon Heights Park on there. I apologize. That should be Northview Estates. Too many playgrounds going through my head. Or that was, that's the shelter, I guess. But these are the dollar amounts, so pay attention to those. And then we also have to do the surfacing within there. So honestly, this $5,600 is probably not going to cover all the surfacing, but we'll take some of that out of operation to to fill in all of that. So so we'll, we'll be spending all of it. So Murphy Park takes a lot of surfacing. It's a, it's a large footprint. So so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And what's our timeframe on this one?
This one would be this fall. Yes.
So on the first one that we had last?
So last, Murphy is this fall and so is Northview Estates. Rockland is probably, they're going to try for this fall, but more than likely, it's going to be this spring. So just based on timing. So and then the two shelters that we've just approved would both be this, all be this fall.
So just operationally speaking, we knock down the playground.
Yes.
And then what's usually the time to get a new one back?
So we don't, we don't take it down until it's till we, till it's here and we know that they're coming. So maybe it's down a week because they might be finishing up on another site and then mobilizing. So it's about a week that that it might be with, we might be without a playground in the area.
Didn't want to deprive the children from.
No, no, we don't want that either. So.
All right, thanks, Scott.
This was one of the parks we played at a ton with my kids growing up. So be interesting, it's been there quite a while, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Move approval 7358.
Motion by Obrich.
Second.
Second by Blake. Discussion, please vote. That passes. All right, we do have one close session item that's going to be coming up. But first, Mayor and council items. Amy?
I just want to thank Jan, the rest of the Parks and Rec Department for all of their efforts to get the word out regarding the vote and educational information out to the public, as well as seeking out additional Great Outdoors Foundation funding to be able to to implement some projects here. Good work, guys.
Thanks, Amy. Laurie?
Well, I think, Scott, I'll say thank you because I know I gave you feedback a few meetings ago about ensuring that when we are installing this playground equipment, we are thinking about child equity. And you guys have done an amazing job of ensuring that we squeeze those in where we can. So thank you.
All right, thanks, Laurie. Matt?
I'll just say that going through this bond referendum, I realized that this is, we have a representative democracy. We had, sorry, I'm going deep here. We have a republic, but this is one of the few areas where we have direct democracy, where people are going out and making their voice heard and making a major decision on their community. And there's just not many opportunities we have to do that. So I just want to thank everybody that went to vote. And I thank everybody that participated in one of the few levels of direct democracy we have in our country. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Matt. Adam?
I'm good.
Bridget?
I got a list. So as usual, DART update. We got caught in the same situation with having to defer our public hearing on our budget. A couple of communities had to raise their levies by .001 to balance everything. We are going to end up with 6.631 as the Urbandale levy, which is down two and a half cents from last year's levy. So there will be some tax relief for Urbandale from from DART. Second item is related to the Waquisi, WRA, project. I've received quite a bit of feedback in the last week from folks, friends of mine, both living in Urbandale and Clive, about the sudden closure of of the trails. I talked to AJ. AJ and I think I talked to our marketing staff. And I appreciate the, us getting out in front of it as quickly as we could. There was a lot, the city of Clive and Waquisi shut down the trails along Walnut Creek through Clive and West Des Moines. And I don't think enough notification was done. And so we kind of got in there, Derek got in there and and worked with Waquisi. I just, I feel a great, like, I wasn't paying close enough attention to the project. But also, you know, people out in Dallas County, you know, by the fire station, it is a torn up mess out there on the north, south from the project in Grimes. And then now we're coming in with the Waquisi project going east and west. And there's, I think, going to be probably even more frustration as those projects are going on at the same time and have our trails, which is what we use to access the parks that we do have in the, in this area. So I really appreciate AJ and Scott and Derek getting on, working with them, with our other communities very closely. But I think we need to do an even better job of communicating with our residents. And I mean, I do believe this is some somewhat related to all of the discussion going on related to the Uplex. People are, have heightened sense of of what's going on in their community right now. And so I want to at all times err on the side of over communicating with people. Because I think in the western part of the community, people are extra sensitive right now about their parks and their trail access. And so whatever we can do to get people information on when stuff's going to be closed, when's going to be reopened. And I think ultimately, in this particular situation, Clive and Waquisi kind of jumped the gun a little bit, maybe in closing the trails. But and then there was a sign that said closed till 2025, which is a big number. Seems like forever. I know it's not, but so that was my second issue. And then, you know, following up a little bit on what Matt said, I mean, today is is a really big day for our community. And regardless of the outcome today, the the discourse in our community has exposed a significant level. has exposed a significant level of discord, which I think we all knew was there. And I talked about it while I was campaigning, and I've encouraged our Parks Department to have programs in, in the western part of the city and have programs in the eastern part to bring people, you know, from one side of the city to the other. But it's alarming and very sad to me, the amount of discord between the east and western part of our communities. And I don't know what we can do to help, you know, like I said, regardless of the outcome of, and I, I mean, I think it's way bigger than the Uplex, actually. Regardless of the outcome, we have to figure out a way to, to bring our community together and educate our community about what our community is. I mean, we have amazing amenities in the eastern part of our community. We have some great parks in the western side of our community. But, you know, honestly, we don't have any community facilities out there, and I don't know that our whole community understands that. And we just have to figure out a way to keep creating community at every, every opportunity. And I've, you know, I think a lot of it's going to come down on our Parks Department, but I also think we need to do more just education on how the city, how the city works, and reminding people that we serve six school districts. And, you know, it's not just about who's in, you know, six blocks of Lions Park. That's not Urbandale anymore. We are almost fifty thousand and many miles from east to west. So I'm just throwing that out there today. Again, who knows what the, what's going to be the outcome of the project, but I think we need to think long and hard about how we can grow our community together. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Bridget. You hit the nail on the head. I mean, we, we are, and as, as long as I've been involved, it, it has been difficult. And we have to keep constantly working at it. We are not a, you know, we are not a nice square community. You know, we, we don't grow evenly, you know, constantly around all our boundaries. We are a long and narrow community, and, and the more we grow, the, the more that exacerbates. And that, as you, as you hit also, the, the school district issue, as far as most of our kids in the western part of, of Urbandale are going to Waquis schools, and so that, that makes the definition. So we do have to work on it. We constantly have to work on it. I don't know if there's a great, easy answer, but it's something that we have to be conscious of and, and work as a community, that we make sure that we are still one uniquely Urbandale community. And that's what we have to work on. So thank you for those comments. I do want to also note, I was remiss on mentioning the, the women who served on the City Council over the years. There was one name that I didn't mention, and I want to make sure I mention her, and that's Miriam Klein. We also recognized her as Urbandale Hall of Fame. She served in the eighties. Don't have the exact years, but I want to make sure Miriam's name got mentioned as well tonight, so. With that, thank you, everybody. We are going to have a close session item on real estate. I would ask for a motion to second to enter into closed session. Motion by Blake. Second by McBurney. Discussion, please vote. Okay, that passes, so.
Break.
Quick.
Bridget, we had a powwow today with all three communities.